I would like to call to order the December 19th, 2016, meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Welcome. It's good to have everybody with us tonight. First item up is the presentation of colors, which will, tonight, will be by Girl Scout Troop 760 from Coal Springs United Methodist Church.
Girl Scouts attention. Color Guard advance. Color Guard, color Guard, post your colors. Please join us in saying the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. After we have our invocation, we will ask all of you to come back up and introduce yourselves, and Commissioner Honeycutt will have a county pen for you. We're very happy to have with us tonight, for our invocation, Pastor Langford from Central United Methodist Church here in Concord. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. As a member of this community, I thank you for fulfilling your mission statement, to give visionary leadership, good stewardship, to ensure public safety, determine county needs, and provide services that continually enhance the quality of life for our children, our youth, and our adults. You are doing well. Thank you. Let's pray. Almighty God, on this night, it's cold and drizzly, but you have sent into this world a light. You have called us to be a beacon of hope to people without jobs, for children who are hungry, for a community that sometimes seems so divided. I give you thanks for these county commissioners, that they give leadership to this community, and show that despite differences at times, they know how to work together for the common good. We give thanks for them, for the staff they represent, all the people of this community, that we may, in this season, reach out with love and care and support for one another. So bless their work this night, bless this entire county. We pray in the name of the child born in Bethlehem. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight. And now, I would like to ask our Girl Scouts from Troop 760 if you would come up to the microphone and introduce yourselves, and tell us what it is you like about being a Girl Scout.
My name's Riley, and one thing I like about Girl Scouts is that you get to have fun, and you get to go on field trips, kind of.
My name is Amber, and one thing that I like about Girl Scouts is getting to see my friends.
Thank you for coming.
My name is Katie, and one thing I like about Girl Scouts is that you get to have fun and you go on trips.
Thank you.
My name is Jalen, and I go to, and, uh, the one thing I like about Girl Scouts is selling cookies.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah. One thing I like about, and one thing I like about Girl Scouts is we get to do a lot of camping trips.
Thank you. You might need some help with the microphone.
My name is Janessa, and my, and I go to West Mill Elementary School, and my favorite thing about Girl Scouts is selling cookies.
My name is Annalee, and one thing I like about Girl Scouts is that we get to go on trips.
Thank you.
My name is Riley, and one thing I like about the Girl Scouts is everything that we learn.
Thank you.
My name is Kiara. A thing I like about Girl Scouts is the friendships you make with the girls around you.
Thank you.
My name is Lexi, and the thing I like about Girl Scouts is service projects.
Thank you. We really appreciate all of you coming and being with us tonight. First item up tonight is approval or correction of the minutes, and you all have copies of those in front of you. Do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I want to backtrack for just a minute and recognize our youth commissioner that's here with us tonight, Kason Nalbone, and I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're glad to have you with us tonight.
I'm glad to be here.
Great. Okay, next item is the approval of the agenda, and at this time, I would entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as presented, including the changes on page 227. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move on to recognitions and presentations. We are very happy to have with us tonight Representative Linda Johnson for a presentation. Welcome, Representative Johnson. It's good to have you here.
I'm not quite that short, although we do call ourselves Smurfs at our house. Chairman Morris and Commissioners, I want to thank you for letting us have a moment on your agenda, and to thank you for working with me on the date that this presentation would be made, and I am very grateful for that, allowing me to present an award to a Cabarrus citizen. So I thank you very much. Although I have to ask your permission, when asking, I only ask for myself, and I should have asked for the delegation. We have, I have with me, and if they will come forward, Paul Newton, our new Senator -elect, and with U.S. Representative Hudson's office, I have Tucker Osborne, and with Senator Tillis's office, Commission and people, all the listeners, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah. Only four times in a hundred years do we have both on the same day, and this, they were both, the eve of December the 24th. So I wish everyone a Happy Hanukkah and a Merry Christmas. And I want to tell you that the recipient of this award does not know that we will be giving the award, and she is someone I admire for her commitment to her community and to her church, to her profession and to our state. And I'm honored to present this order of the Longleaf Pine. She is unaware, as I said, she believes he, she, as always, is here on the behalf of the support of someone else. So I'm going to sort of squeeze in the surprise to her. I'm going to read the first little note I have here. This nominee was born to Glenn and Hattie Huffman in Rowan County. This Rowan County graduate graduated from Lundus High School in 1952 and went to Lee College in Tennessee before returning to Rowan County and graduating in 1956 from Catawba County, I mean Catawba College. And if someone will help Ms. Betty, she has a knee problem today. I'm going to turn it this way because the camera's that way, okay? If you just hold it for me so they can see it. Thank you, Fred. After, after Betty graduated from Catawba College, she married Fred Steen Senior in 1957 at the First Baptist Church in Kannapolis, and they have made that their church home until this day. Betty has served as a Deacon on Church Council from 2008 to 2012 at First Baptist and taught Sunday School for over 30 years. She remains a member of the church choir. In 1969, Fred and Betty built a house in Cabarrus in Rolling Hills, Rollingwood Forest, on the banks of Cottle Creek in the Odell Community. Betty was a professional educator, teaching over 40 years in the classroom and mentoring other teachers before and after her retirement. Her public school tenure took her to several different schools. She taught in Kannapolis at Shady Brook, just right next to my house. In Rowan County, she, she taught at China Grove Elementary and Lundus Elementary. And she has been, she, she taught at Cabarrus County Schools and Odell Elementary. From 1969 to 1999, for 30 years, she serviced our community. She earned her master's degree in education from UNC Charlotte while teaching at Odell School. Betty has held various leadership roles with clubs, sororities, and volunteerism for over 40 years. Betty has still married to Fred Steen Senior for over 58 years. Betty and Fred had two children, Fred the Second, and his wife Tina is here tonight, Brad and his wife Wendy, three grandchildren, Blake Steen, Blair Steen, and Drew Steen, two great-grandchildren, Tristan and Brayden. It is an honor for me to have nominated Betty Steen, with Governor Pat McCrory concurring for the Order of the Longleaf Pine. Congratulations to you. You're well, it's well deserved.
I wish everyone could have enjoyed teaching as much as I did, and I'm glad I talk when I talk. And I have some former students right here with me tonight. Lanny?
Look on the wall, there's some Odell folks.
All those Odell people. I'm glad you're here.
Your boss is here.
He was the best person in the world. He had such a good time at Odell, and I loved all this during I taught. Still love teaching, I'm still in Sunday School, but this is a wonderful surprise. I had no idea, no idea.
Well, we're not through yet, Betty. Want to turn around so that when the others address that? I was accusing Betty of not wearing her T-shirt, her protesting T-shirt, because she thought she was supporting someone else. In the request and asking you to come for the presentation, I did not include Representative Hudson or Senator Tillis's office, but they have correspondence they would like to read, if that is okay with the, okay, I'll start with Richard Hudson's office. This is Madison is his first name, Tucker Osborne.
It's an honor to be here tonight on this special occasion. The Congressman regretted that he couldn't be here to present this in person, but he did send down a letter of congratulations to you, Ms. Betty, so I'd like to read just a portion of that letter. "I'm extremely grateful for your willingness to place the needs of others in front of your own and serve our area with such grace and humility. I know your legacy will be a lasting one, and we will be remembering your efforts for many years to come. So on behalf of Congressman Richard Hudson, congratulations, Ms.
Elizabeth, Elizabeth Edwards with Senator Tillis's office.
Thank you, Representative Johnson. Mr., Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth, and I am here on behalf of Senator Tom Tillis. It's a pleasure for me to be here because I have known Ms. Betty, as I call her, for a number of years. I won't say how many years, but I would like to read just a portion of a letter that the Senator asked me to read on his behalf. "Betty, your selection is a tribute to the many years of service you have given to North Carolina. Your career truly reflects the highest standard of integrity, and I thank you for your commitment to public service. Congratulations on this well-deserved honor." Thank you.
Now, for closing, we're going to read how wonderful you are. On behalf of Pat McCrory, Pat McCrory, the Governor, repose a special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Betty Huffman Steen. I do by the presence confer the Order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of Ambassador Extraordinaire, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast in selected company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the Old North State. And you taught it. Well, we'll, I'll be over at your house so you can toast it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Thank, thank you, Representative Johnson, for that presentation, and congratulations to Ms. Steen. She has been such an important part of this community. I see a lot, I think I see former students and former coworkers around the room, and I am very proud to say that I am one of those former students from Shady Brook Elementary School. And I'm not sure exactly when in the 1960s that was, but since they've given all your other dates, I'll go ahead and say that. Congratulations. 62, okay. Better, better, better memory than me. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a recognition from Human Resources, and we have Ben Rose with us.
Good evening. Our retiree tonight, I don't think, needs any, any introduction. Kathy Maurer will be retiring with us after 32 years of service, well over 32 years of service with Cabarrus County. And Kathy, it's really with mixed emotions that I'm here tonight because I'm so happy for her and her new milestone that she's taken, but we are truly losing a dedicated public servant. She has navigated a lot of waters over the years with us, most recently, since I've been here in 2009. Kathy has served as the Program Administrator for Adult and Aging, and has helped us to do the consolidation that we did with Aging Services, has taken on new roles with Home Care Community Block Grant, Lunch Plus. She has been a big part of developing the Community Resource Connection that we have here as well. And we have, as part of our mission statement in Human Services in partnership with the community, and Kathy definitely lives that, she has built new partnerships, fostered old existing partnerships, and really just done a tremendous job for our citizens of this county. So we, with some sadness in my heart, but happiness for her, we're here to honor her tonight in her retirement.
I just wanted to share a few words with you, ladies and gentlemen. Standing here in front of you, it's hard for me to believe that I've worked for Cabarrus County for 30-plus years. Looking back, I can say that they've been good years in a great organization, and I'm very thankful for the many opportunities that I've had during my tenure at Human Services. Opportunities to serve my community, opportunities to grow as a person and a professional, and opportunities for advancement that I've been given. In the short term, I look forward to being able to spend more time with family, especially my grandchildren, and to enjoy opportunities as they present themselves. Looking back, a lot of things have changed. When I started, we used all paper and calculators, and I was so excited when the county purchased an adding machine for me that I could have at my own desk. Now it's NC Fast and computers. We all made our home visits in our own personal cars, or we had the luxury of using one of the Crown Victorias that the Sheriff's Department had retired. And then, when I first came, it was only 30 or 50 staff. We knew everybody's name, we knew everybody, their family, what was happening, and that's a lot different today. Yes, there were up and downs, but I had the privilege to work with a super team of people, especially over these last couple of years in the Adult and Aging Division. I leave knowing that the seniors and disabled adults of Cabarrus County are in good hands because of the diligent work and dedication of that staff. To all of the wonderful people I've had, whom I've had the opportunity to serve and work with over the past 32 years, I hope that in some way, I've made a difference in their lives. Thank you.
I've watched you in action through the Senior Advisory Council. You are leaving a big hole, taking a wealth of knowledge with you, but I am sure that you have left it with people behind, but it won't be the same, but we wish you much happiness, and we will truly miss you, even though we don't get to see you as much as these guys do.
Thank you so much for your kind words. Thank you.
Congratulations, Kathy, and thank you for everything you've done. I think I've had the pleasure of working with you on community activities before I became a Commissioner, and have always been impressed with your dedication, and I think most people would not know unless they've been fortunate enough to attend some of the Human Services Christmas luncheons, that you're quite an entertainer and performer as well.
Maybe that will be my next career.
Okay, could be, could be. Congratulations. Okay, next, from, from Human Resources, recognition by Alan Thompson.
It is an honor to be here tonight to recognize two of our team members for reaching the point of retirement, but I would also echo the same sentiments of Mr. Rose, is that it's a bittersweet time, because we do recognize our, our family members, our teammates, for reaching this point of retirement, but they truly will leave a void. First, I will recognize Master Paramedic Mike Penninger. If I could ask him to come forward. Mike Penninger came to work in Cabarrus County in March of 1987 as a paramedic, and I shared this during a ceremony that we had a few days ago, that Mike is one of those that I looked up to when I first came into the business, before I was credentialed, before I was working anywhere, I looked up and I said, "That's the paramedic that I want to be like." And I've had the fortune of working with Mike for many years now. Mike has worked 29 years and nine months with Cabarrus County as a field-level paramedic, helped to start with our previous director, the first special response team in the county, a disaster team, and also was one of our tactical medics, and currently serves as one of our hazardous materials medics. So his career has been about serving people with their point of need. It's about serving people in austere environments, being one of the first to go in when everyone else was running out. So tonight, we want to thank Mike for his career and many contributions that he has made, and the friendships that we've shared, and leaving, being a role model for many other young paramedics like I used to be, got old now, but have looked up to and helped to shape our careers. So thank you, brother.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to do my entire career as a paramedic with Cabarrus County, and I'm going to miss everybody, even you guys.
Great.
Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas.
I have a little something for you. On behalf of the Commissioners and the citizens of Cabarrus County, we want to thank you for the difference that you've made in the lives of our citizens. I know you've been a welcome sight when needed, so thank you so much for everything and best of luck in your retirement.
I would now invite Lieutenant Bill Jamison to come forward. Bill came to work for Cabarrus County in February of 1988, and has worked with the county for 28 years and 10 months, and has achieved the rank of Relief Supervisor Lieutenant. And one of the things that really sticks out about Lieutenant Jamison is his commitment to providing positive relationships for children, positive relationships for the public, for the community, been heavily involved in community education, helped to start the local high school EMT program, and actually had this vision many years ago, and it came into fruition because of the work of a lot of people. And it was, it was one of those ideas that, that he had, and he had that idea because he knew that it could make a difference and it could reach people on a different level. Bill has been involved in a lot of different committees and touching lives not only in EMS, but also outside of EMS. One of the things that I say about Lieutenant Jamison and Master Paramedic Penninger is they have served their entire career working on the ambulance, responding to calls, making a difference each and every day. And then what Lieutenant Jamison also has done is five mission trips, five international mission trips, working medical missions with different groups, so taking the knowledge and the skill set that he's learned here to other places. So Bill, we're going to sorely miss you. You have made a huge impact here to this service, and someone that we can always depend on, knowing that if a job needed to get done, it was going to happen, and you've done that, and you've done that well. So we thank you for your service today, brother.
Thank you. I forgot I may have to say something when I came here tonight. It's been an unbelievable experience to serve the citizens of Cabarrus County. I've got a lot of experiences, and I've seen a lot of things in the back of the ambulance in that time. I've watched the service go from running probably 22 or 2300 calls a year to, I think we're going to probably hit 30,000 calls this year. I've had the opportunity to work with some amazing people in that time, a lot of whom are standing in the back of that room. Once again, I'd just like to say it's been an honor to serve, and I thank you.
We want to thank you this evening for your commitment and your vision for what you've done to make Cabarrus County a safer place to live, and we wish you much happiness in your future retirement.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. It's, as we just completed Employee Service, Length of Service Awards earlier tonight, it's remarkable, the number of people like you two guys that, that have served so long and so well, the citizens of Cabarrus County, and we truly do appreciate it, and wish you the best in your retirement. Next, we have a presentation by Kelly Sifford.
Good evening, and I have good news. This one's not leaving us right now.
Good.
Mike Puddle, come on up. We have very exciting and unique- We have very exciting and unique news. Mike has achieved something that only 248 code officials out of the 4,000 in the state have, and that is to get a Level III certification in all five trades. It's very rare, and we have two on our staff and two that are very close. And so we wanted to recognize him tonight for his achievements. We have a lovely certificate. Thank you, Mike. Congratulations for what you did.
Just wanted to say one quick thing. Spent a lot of time, a lot of study, a lot of late nights, but I could not have done it without the support of management and our wonderful Director. With all the extracurricular activities I've done with, you know, with the county, I just appreciate all the support and everybody that's been there for me. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations, and we certainly appreciate what you do for Cabarrus County. I think that most people probably don't realize really what a huge deal that is in helping us to continue to do the great job that you guys do with our inspections all the time. Thank you.
Yes, that gives us flexibility in scheduling. It gives expertise when people need to do work in the field. He can advise on multiple subjects, and he took sixteen tests and fifteen state exams to get there.
Oh, wow.
So it's very important, a very great achievement. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we have from a presentation from Kasha Thompson.
Good evening. In February, the county added a photo display in the front of the rotunda. As you walk into the governmental center, it's on the right side. Our first display focused on new building projects across the county, New Concord and Kannaplis City Hall, and the New Concord Fire Eleven EMS Station Nine. Each of the photos that were on display were the work of LJ Woslawski of Light Capture Photography in Concord. We want to thank LJ for his beautiful work and will gift him with a framed copy of the Concord City Hall. He's also an employee of the City of Concord. The inscription reads that his photo was displayed at the Cabarrus County Governmental Center, February through November of 2016. We just want to publicly thank LJ.
Great, thank you.
I'll lift this up, but it's very heavy.
It is a beautiful photograph. Very nice. Thank you, LJ. I wish he had been here to receive it in person. Thank you, Kasha. Okay, next we have a proclamation regarding Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and I will read that proclamation now. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and devoted his life to fighting poverty, injustice, and racism in America. And whereas Dr. King, through his practice of nonviolent protest, promoted the importance of love, peace, and freedom for humankind, and challenged America to honor its promise of liberty and justice for all citizens. And whereas during his lifetime, Dr. King sought to forge the common ground on which individuals of all ages, races, and backgrounds could join together to address important community issues and provide service to their community. And whereas the Third Monday in January has been established as a national holiday to observe the anniversary of Dr. King's birth. Now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims Monday, January 16, 2017, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Cabarrus County, and encourages all citizens to join in the special programs and ceremonies to be held on January 14 through 16, honoring the life and work of Dr. King and his legacy of peace and equality for all citizens. And at this time, I would entertain a motion that we adopt this proclamation. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. And I think we have another resolution which is in new business. So now we've come to the time in our program for informal public comments. Those are people that would like to address the board that have filled out the yellow cards, and I do not have any, but I would welcome anybody to the podium that would like to speak at this time. Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to E, which is old business. The one item there is request to lease area adjacent to the Concord Library, and Jonathan Marshall has some information for us.
Thank you. We have worked out almost all the final details for this lease. Unfortunately, Mitchell Nix will be the restaurant operator who I've been working with, was planning to be here this evening and is unable to make it. The outstanding issues were the area that they wished to lease, which is as we've described it to you, and they will be completing a final survey that can attach to that lease. Michael Miller with our Infrastructure and Asset has met them there, and that is, again, the area we described to you, to the building, to the restaurant building side of the sidewalk and that strip, as well as the plantings and fencing that you had asked for that would delineate that area and enclose that outdoor patio. Finally, we had talked to our real estate advisors about a lease rate for that, and their range was between $200 and $300 per month. Mr. Nix and Amy Daniels, the owner, had proposed paying on a graduated level so they could absorb some of the expenses of improving that area. We went back and forth a little bit on that, and what we've arrived at, they have proposed $1,500 per year for the first year and $3,000 per year after that for the remaining four years. And of course, this lease is written, so there is a five-year renewal that's possible. What we had proposed in return, somewhere in between that, was $2,000 for the first year and then $3,000 per year after that. And again, unfortunately, he alerted me this afternoon that he was unable to make it to the meeting. So at this point, if the board has some direction, I can give that information to them, or if you wish to act, if you feel confident in that, or else we can ask that he come to a later meeting and we finalize this at that meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? In conversation regarding this matter, if I understand correctly, I think that there are some issues that involved in this property lease that has some effect on their construction plans as far as some access and doors that they need to cut?
That's right. So I had talked to the lead inspector of our Building Division and the Inspection Department. They are required to have a secondary egress, and there is a door, and they'd indicated this earlier, the door that will be going out into this area. And in fact, there are pictures, they own that wall, so they have removed the brick and are ready to install that door. So there is some timeliness to this, and I believe they have to have that egress in order to get their occupancy permit. And checking their inspections, they are fairly close to be able to occupy the building.
Yeah. I would propose, and I would make this in the form of a motion, that we go ahead and approve an agreement to lease this property to them as suggested by staff for $2,000 for year one and $3,000 per year for each year thereafter. And that, if they agree to that, then that would prevent them from having to experience a delay waiting on us to meet next month.
One second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Next up is our consent agenda, which you all have before you, which are all items that we have discussed at length previously at our work session. Do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. So we move on to new business. First item is from Finance. I think Susan Fearington has a presentation for us.
Okay. You also have a hard copy in front of you of the audit presentation. And this evening, I want to present to you the 2016 Fiscal Year Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We call it CAFR for short. If approved tonight, the CAFR will be available on the website tomorrow morning. The document is prepared with great precision and involves a long process with the help of the majority of the Finance Department. I want to thank tonight Suzanne Burgess, Douglas Brewer, Pam Dubois, and the entire Finance Staff. Without their help, the audit and the CAFR presentation this year would not be possible. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles of generally accepted in the United States of America. After the CAFR is prepared by the county, it is reviewed by the auditors and then submitted to the Local Government Commission, the LGC, for approval by October 31 deadline. This year, due to the timing of Department of Human Service compliance testing and new uniform guidance, federal testing guidelines, that was for all grant revenues, we had delay in submitting our CAFR to the Local Government Commission. It was submitted on December 9, and then we heard last week on December 15 that it has been approved. An explanation of our delays and the unique year that we've had will be further explained in this presentation. The county also each year submits our CAFR for the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Reporting. This 2015, this prior fiscal year, was the 31st consecutive year we received the award. So this year for the 2016, we will be submitting it once again for the approval, and hopefully we'll get 32 years consecutive. So in your handout on page two, I'll walk you through a couple of the pages, is a letter from our auditing firm, Martin Starnes. Let's get to the next page. Okay, this is the Independent Auditor's Report. With this, the letter is basically stating that the county has an unmodified opinion on our financial statement. That's all the financial records that is in the CAFR. This is the best thing you can receive for financial records. This letter also stated there were no financial statement findings. I keep repeating financial because that'll become important later on when we talk about our compliance, but for this portion of our CAFR, there were no findings. Okay, on the page in your handout, if you turn over to page five, I'll go on over for that. Pop this page? Okay. There's another letter here. The second letter is a responsibility letter. This is a letter to make sure that the reader knows that when we present our CAFR to the public, that is the management's responsibility. It's not the auditor's responsibility to find all the problems in the county and stuff that. They come in, they do a cursory review of everything, but it's also, when we present these financial statements to the public, it is management's responsibility to make sure that proper internal controls are in place, that we're reporting all of our, to the best of our knowledge, we're reporting all of our assets, our liabilities, everything that we can possibly, to our knowledge, that we can do the best job we have done. So that's just, that letter's responsibility letter's there on page five. It goes through page seven. The next pages of our presentation are there for your review, and what includes is our balance sheet for the general fund, and that begins on your handout on page eight and on our screen here. And on page nine, we have our statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. These, again, are for your reference. More details definitely in our document that will be online tomorrow. The general fund is the one we highlight each year, and that is our main operating fund. That's where the majority of the county's activities run through, the general fund. So tonight, I will not be going through each line like I've done in the past because we have a current board that's been in place for two years now, but I'm also available anytime for individual questions to get into the nitty-gritty if you have questions. So the most important part that most people want to find out is what's our fund balance and what can we do with it? How much money can we spend for our projects? So on page 10 of your handout, and I'll get to that on the screen, have a recap here that I'll go through with you, and it talks about our fund balance. So for Fiscal Year 16, which is the one that's currently we're reviewing, our revenues over expenditures were actually a negative $721,000. And that sounds bad, however, let me explain to you what happened. Our revenues were actually $9.7 million over our budget, and our expenditures came in at $12.7 million under budget. However, each year during this presentation, we make a fund balance transfer from our general fund to our capital reserve based on your 15% fund balance policy that has to be run through our financial statements. So that's why it looks like we lost money for the year, but in fact, we didn't. It just has to be run through that system, through the financial statements. So last year, after the 2015 audit presentation, we transferred $18.7 million into our capital reserve, and we're able to use that for our capital projects and capital needs. So each year, like I said, each year during the audit presentation, the fund balance, that's 15%, if approved, is transferred to the capital reserve. I want to point out this year that the biggest areas of revenue where we're over budget were in property taxes. We were over budget by $5.1 million. We collected $5.1 million over what we budgeted, what we were going to. And our intergovernmental revenues were $2.1 million. Permits and fees were over $1 million. The property, we're due by a couple of reasons here. Property tax collection rate increased from prior year of 97.32% and went to 98.19. Our intergovernmental revenues increased mainly in the areas of daycare and social service administration reimbursements. And our inspection fees, everyone knows about the economy growing, and all the time talking about building inspections staying busy and keeping up. So our inspection fees were over $568,000, and our registered deeds were $397,000 over. Our biggest areas of expenditures where they were under budgeted were in the areas of salary and benefits for unfulfilled vacancies, $1.9 million, and our unpaid economic incentive grants of $3.8. Other areas were human services, child welfare, and economic services for $1.4 million. Our departments were also very conservative, and the majority of all departments were under their budgeted amounts. The next page, which is page 11 for your handout, is a recap of the amount that we can transfer this year to our capital reserve fund. Please note that our ending fund balance is $80,288,983. We cannot spend that much money in our capital reserve. That is not the amount we're going to transfer over. It's tempting, but that's not the amount that we can do that. Each year, we have to take that $80 million or the ending fund balance, and we have to subtract out different categories. For example, we have to subtract out their nonspendables, which is our inventory and prepaid items, and we have to back out our restricted amounts. We have something called a reserve by state statute, which is usually our accounts receivable, and that this year was $14.6 million, so that's a big jump in that. And our debt service payments, some of those come right after the beginning of the fiscal year, so we have to account for those. And also, we have to back out the reserve by state statute, excuse me, reserve by our 15% fund balance policy this year is $35 million. So you'll see that down about three-quarters of the way down the page. So after we take away all the nonspendables, the restricted, the committed amounts, our fund balance policy, all these things taken out, we have, and then we, I'm sorry, we have one more thing to take away. Last month, we had $802,000. We wanted to transfer money for our engineering, for our parking deck, so that had to come out, too. So today, we have $14,504,394. That is the amount that we will be able to transfer if approved tonight to our capital reserve fund. This money can be used for one-time projects, not operating after it's transferred. So that's the amount that everybody's been wanting to know, is $14,504,394. I know I've thrown out a lot of numbers so far. Any general questions for now? Okay. The next couple pages, I have a budget amendment for the $14 million, and also a project ordinance that at the end of the presentation, then I will ask if you want to... And also a project ordinance that at the end of the presentation, then I will ask if you would like to approve those two items at the end. As I mentioned earlier, this year has been a unique year for our compliance testing and our new federal uniform guidance requirements. This is the first time that we've received a qualified opinion on the childcare program for our compliance section of the audit. There's nothing really to look at here in your, in your book. Our, as our audit firm representative will share with you, we had 13 compliance findings. And some of them which, which had question costs associated with them. The county finance, county manager and the DHS representatives have met to discuss the findings and suggestions have been made for improvement. The compliance testing, the new federal requirements, and a general overview of the finding categories will now be explained by Erica Brown. She is the audit manager with Martin Starnes and Associates. She will then be followed by the DH director, Ben Rose, to complete this section of our presentation, and then I'll come back up and finish.
Good evening. As Susan said, my name's Erica Brown. I'm a senior audit manager at Martin Starnes and Associates. And I wanted to thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to present to you and let you know that we do not take this relationship for granted and we enjoy working with Susan and all the finance staff. They're always very well-prepared for us and a pleasure to work with. So I'd like to thank the whole staff for that. As Susan said, the audit report, financials, and compliance have been approved, submitted and approved to a local government commission. And we did issue an unmodified audit opinion on the financial statements. And this, as Susan said, is a clean opinion, the best opinion you can get. There is no financial statement findings. As Susan spoke, which I, if you have questions, I can answer them, about some things that were unique this year regarding the single audit and compliance of the programs that we tested. Uniform guidance is something that comes down from the federal government for all the federal grants. And it used to fall under what was called A133. That has changed from A133 guidelines to uniform guidance guidelines. And what this does is it's stricter than it was before. There are items in the past that they said you should do, you should have this in writing, you should do. Uniform guidance now says you must do. So there are things that maybe not necessarily were wrong before, they were encouraged, and now they say that they must be done. So we did issue, there were 13 compliance findings. And this was over Medicaid, childcare, Health Choice, which is also known as CHIPS, TANF, which is a temporary assistance for needy families, and the adoption subsidy program. The majority of these findings were internal control related. And as Susan said, the childcare program had a qualified opinion. And what this means is that they had, you go from unmodified to qualified, they had so many findings in that area that that opinion had to be qualified. I don't know if you have any questions or would like any further explanation. We have worked with finance and with DSS through these items. We have talked about ways that these things could be improved and, and why they were reported. One more thing I'd like to add is what constitutes something that has to be a finding? That, we kind of always get that question, well, who makes that decision? And there's a lot of things that play into that. One thing is the state auditor has to have an opinion on the state as a whole. And to do that, she relies on county auditors' reports in order to determine her opinion on the entire state. And so she gives us as county auditors, attributes that we must look at for the programs she deems high risk. And she defines those attributes and tells us exactly what we need to look for. If those items are not there, that is, she defines the errors as well. So that is where these are coming from. And to understand where she's coming from, she has to know where all the counties stand so she can have an opinion on these programs as a whole with the significant federal dollars that are obtained by the counties. So I hope that helps explain a little bit. If there's any detailed questions or anything, I can answer them or we can answer them on another date.
Any questions, commissioners?
And thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come and provide you some feedback regarding some of the strategies that we're going to deploy to try to address the findings within our single county audit. We've had several meetings to review the issues and to try to plan strategies that will help us both improve some of our internal controls as well as improve our accuracy in our processes. We take these findings very seriously. And with the new uniform guidelines, they do present more challenges, more challenges for us. Of course, one of our biggest challenges that we have is just sheer volume within our cases. We have 37,000 cases that we conduct literally thousands of transactions a month on. And we, unfortunately, at times, will have some human errors. So we want to aggressively try to seek that out, to try to make sure that we can always be as accurate and processing our cases as efficiently as we can. And while many of these findings may be just one or two errors within the, within the process itself, we take, we want to treat each one very aggressively. We have a three-point plan that we want to share with you tonight and part of dealing with some of the findings within the economic services area. One of the first things that we have decided to do, and I'm going to have Diane share this information with you so you can have it on file, is to develop some standard operating procedures regarding some of the audit findings. This will allow us to have a, a very set form of principles, steps, and processes that our workers can use. They define certain actions and steps that need to be taken. And will, in addition to that, provide supervisors and our trainers tools for training and review, reviewing the work and communication with our staff. The standard operating procedures that you have, they're going to be on the right side of your pocket. We've developed quite a few and are still looking at a couple of others potentially. But they, they deal with second-party reviews, how we transfer in and out cases within Medicaid, childcare, which obviously is one we'll talk to specifically in a few minutes, and work first quality reviews as well. The standard operating procedures relate to the specific agency findings that we did have. And they are regarding processing casework and hopefully will help provide further guidance and clarification for our staff, up and above even the state policy, so that they can be as efficient as they can when they do a process a case. You have to understand that when they process a case, if they miss one little thing, it can throw, basically, the audit out of whack. So we're trying to cover every area that we can using checklists, using standard operating procedures to help our workers, give them the best chance to make sure they do everything in one case. Because one little thing can, can knock it right out. And second strategy that we are doing, of course, is training. And training is something we've been doing very intensely over the last year within the economic services area. And of course, training is key in assuring that our workers have all the resources and knowledge that they need to have to properly process cases. We have been focused on intensive training within economic services area for the past year. And now we want to provide targeted training relating to some of the issues that was found within our, within our audit. We are, in addition to that, we're working to return to specialization within economic services. Under North Carolina FAST, they promoted us going to more of a generic form of casework. And we did try to work with that under, in cooperation with the state. However, with NCFAST and the challenges that we've had with the program, it just has not been an efficient way to do business. So we are going back to more of a specialization. And that will narrow the scope for our workers and hopefully give them a, you know, a, a narrower job focus. Will improve their accuracy and improve their efficiency for clients and within the programs because they will only have to deal with one program versus two programs or three programs. So that is going to be one key that we've done. We've developed very great training over the past year, and we're going to continue to build and intensify on that. The third strategy, which is really one of the most important ones, and of course, was one of the findings that we have, is second-party reviews of cases that we do process. We believe this is, of course, a key factor in improving the staff accuracy and reducing our agency errors. And as a division, economic services has always done second-party reviews. Sadly though, last December, we had a drop of thousands of recertifications from NCFAST. And we had to put them on hold because we felt like we wanted to focus on getting these services to the clients. And then we had, so we had a, a temporary suspension of our second-party reviews. We will not do that in the future. In fact, we cannot because the state is actually under a corrective action plan for second-party reviews. So we've always done them, but we did have a temporary suspension of them. But we felt like, you know, it was just more critical at that time to get those services to the clients. But we have resumed second-party reviews. So we have started them back, we resumed them a few months ago. So we are doing second-party reviews again. And we want to continue to strengthen them because we believe that this is a critical part of improving accuracy and internal controls within the Medicaid, WorkFirst, and CHIP programs. So we have developed a standard operating procedure for second-party reviews that is in your packet as well. And we have also looked at discussing second-party reviews to try to focus on very specific issues and processes. So in other words, if we identify a deficiency or a gap that is occurring, we will do specific second-party reviews on that one process versus the whole case to help us try to determine where that gap is, what has happened, and how we need to correct it going forward. So that is something we're going to look at there. We are going to be working with our IT department to hopefully develop a better tool for second-party reviews. And one that may provide more congregate data for us as well too, so that we can see trends and address them accordingly with training. We have also had discussions about separating out actually positions to do quality assurance. Because right now, at this point in time, we have work, the workers that do them, they do combined training and quality assurance. So we have thought, we've had discussions about potentially creating a quality assurance unit that would, that would be their only focus is to do quality assurance of these cases. So we were going to further assess and, and see if we can develop that process as well. So we believe that we just don't need to have a second-party review system in place, but it needs to really have value and merit for us so that we can work to improve in all areas of casework that we do. A couple of other additional things that we are looking at here as well too. Some of the sightings that we have is we are developing our performance measures now starting our budget. We are going to look at, including some of these issues in our performance measures, especially probably second-party reviews that I just talked about, and then maybe some other areas as well. So we can continue to have that ongoing monitoring. So that will be a big part of what we do as well too. We, we're under a lot of pressures and, and guidelines from the state. We do, as you know, I think we've discussed with you in the past, that we have now a 95% timeliness rate from USDA versus 90%. So we are always trying to meet that rate weekly, and that is a, a challenge in itself. And in addition to that, we have a Medicaid report card that we have to pass each month, which we have been passing. But again, it adds those, those additional pressures to us. The North Carolina Association of County Social Service Directors as well has had some discussions last month at their meeting regarding the audit process for counties. Because we were not the only county in this situation with the new guidelines. So they are going to be having some discussions with the state to try to look at resources and training there for us as well too. So hopefully, they'll be doing some advocacy there to help us get resources to help us in that area. Two general areas that we had that we are addressing. The one is computer security. That was one, one of our findings. And this is basically, our staff have access to state systems. And of course, they are required to protect that information on a routine basis. And part of this requirement is ensuring that computers are secured when they are not at their desk. This issue came up again in our past audit, and we have dealt with this before and consistently deal with it. And as you can imagine, it literally takes 10 seconds going to the copier. But if an auditor walks by and you hear that copy, you've not secured your computer, it's a finding. So we, we have really tried to work to change the culture of our staff and to help them understand the importance of securing that computer even when they go to the path room or go to the copier for a brief period of time. So we're doing some things here to help, and, you know, additional measures up and above our routine audits to help try to improve in this area. One of the things we're going to be doing is supervisors will actually be documenting monthly computer security audits in their area, and they will be submitting those audits both to the administrator and to myself and Suzanne Moose. And your packets on the right side, you will see an auditor sheet that one of, that Diane, Diana Martin has developed for us that we will be using agency-wide. Because again, this is not just economic services, this is for the agency. So supervisors have a requirement of doing this monthly to do random audits of their, of their workers to ensure that this is occurring. The admin area as well, with our security officer, will be doing random audits. They have been doing random audits and will continue to do those as well too. So we will have two sets of audits going on for computer security. We will have, each Cuban office area will have a reminder sign hung up in their office, which actually is included in your packet as well too, that when you're away, lock that computer. And we will want to make sure that we have confidentiality agreements signed annually by each employee. We feel like we have to set forth the expectation and the understanding that this is a very serious thing to do. We've discussed it at our agency leadership team meetings just as much as last week. So we're going to try to change the culture here and really get employees to understand that this is an important thing to do. But in the end, it does come down to the employee and their responsibility in doing that. The second issue that we had was day sheets. And day sheets are state-provided forms that workers who work across several funding streams, they complete these to document their time so that we can code for the reimbursement. So basically, it's a time sheet in, in a lot of ways. But they're coding their time to certain funds that we have. And of course, we are sadly one of the states that actually does 100% timed day sheets. We are the only state, I believe, in the country that actually does that. So we are working diligently with the state to try to get that in a better place. However, while we are doing day sheets, they do have a requirement that every supervisor must review and sign off on them. And I think we had two or three day sheets that did not have that. So we have retrained our supervisors again in this area and stressed the importance to them just as recently as last week in our agency leadership team meeting about reviewing day sheets and signing them. And not just looking at them and signing them, but actually reviewing them. In addition, we have had, finance has been doing some audits of day sheets. They have now, with the audit finding, are doing 100% audits of day sheets. So if they find an issue, hopefully, we can get it corrected. So those are some steps that we're taking there. As they mentioned, we did have a finding regarding the adoption subsidy. That was an issue that we did have in January, and we actually did address that in January. So we have resolved that issue at this point. It was still cited because we had issues before January with it. However, we have fixed that. And basically, we were doing the second-party reviews of that program. They were just not, there was not a signature line on the form that the state provides. So the supervisor would do the review but was not signing them. So now we've added a signature line as well too. And we have had discussions on even adding a signature stamp to just ensure that it's always signed. So we feel like we have addressed and corrected that problem there. In regards to childcare, as we talked about, there was a qualified opinion there. And childcare is a very complicated program there. So we have, I have up here Laura Leip, who is the supervisor of childcare, and Diane Gridley is the program administrator. And they're going to talk a little bit about some of the strategies that we're doing there to correct those issues from that daycare finding. So, would you guys take that?
We are not going to go into great detail about the childcare. But there is a SOP in your packet. One of the things that they found regarding daycare is that we did not have appropriate internal controls and segregation duties. But just so you know, since the audit, we do have a finance clerk that is now assisting us with the daycare process. So we have got that situation taken care of and working with us to make sure we do not have that issue going on any longer. And we did have one particular case that was cited in the audit where we had a client that we did issue an incorrect notice. And as a result of that notice, the client's benefits got terminated. And once the client reappeared in the agency, we, we recognized that we had really incorrectly closed that client's case. And once we went through the process of getting the information from that client, we went back to the original date of that client's case and corrected the situation. And you'll see maybe in your packet where it talks about backdating. But we went back to the original date once we verified all the information she provided us what we needed. What we did verify with the state after we had issued the benefits is the state told us in those situations, from this point forward, we need to use county funds, not federal funds. So the SOP does go through that. And you're going to see one called daycare agency errors is that SOP. So we've gone back and corrected it. So you will see that one. So that was a simplified version of that case. So if you have any questions.
I just got one question. When that happens, how long does it take you to correct that when they're taken off the list, you know, by mistake?
It does not take long once we get all the verifications that we need. And it sometimes depends on how quickly we see the client. But that would not be someone that we want to put back on a waiting list if we recognize we made a mistake because of the number of individuals we have on a waiting list. So we, we corrected our agency.
So we corrected our agency error.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the only other thing I would report out, too, as well, is that of our calls that we had, the question calls, one case was about 95% of that cost, which was an SSI case. And those cases are, can be challenging and can be, definitely lead to some errors and mistakes. So we are looking at doing some very specific targeted training for that as well, too. And I think Diane has reorganized the area so that SSI cases would be more streamlined. But that was about $39,000 in that one case, and we had about $44,000 of question calls. So we are looking to do some very targeted training there as well to try to prevent those errors. And SSI cases, from what I understand from the association, have been an issue across counties in the audits this year with the new guidelines. So that's a lot of information, I know, put at you. However, we're here to answer any questions and any other guidance or directives you would like to provide us, we'd be happy to receive and implement.
What is SSI?
Social Security Supplemental Income. So SSI cases, basically, if people that receive SSI automatically qualify for Medicaid, so they are a special type of a case. And what happens is if someone's benefits changes and we don't get that change into NCFAST, and they may be receiving Medicaid when they're not eligible. And that's what happened in this case.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one question. And Diana, you mentioned that sometimes when a person's benefits are terminated or not being used for whatever reason, errors that was made in that case there, and county funds would have to be used. I would only assume that the county funds are reimbursed whenever everything gets settled out. Is that correct?
In those situations, no. And in the SOP, you'll see that we have to get a director approval before we will authorize those benefits. So we cannot go back and fix that case without director approval.
Okay. Have we had any cases like that in a while?
We have not.
I mean, I don't recall any myself.
No, sir.
Sure, somebody else would. But, and so that would definitely be something we would want to play close attention to, no doubt. Because if you're not going to get reimbursed for it, then that means the county has to eat it. So that's sometimes a pretty expensive mistake.
Correct. That's why it has director approval as one of the very last requirements in that standard operating procedure. And from what our discussion with Laura, it happens rarely.
Well, that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
And I know you guys have a tough job. As we've talked about it before, the case level and, you know, the complexity of what you're doing. And I know there's going to be mistakes. There's no way out of it because it's just so complex with what all you do. But I for one appreciate it, and I know the board does as well and county staff. But, you know, you're going to have mistakes, but at least you're on top of it and trying to eliminate them. Thank you.
We try. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for that explanation. I'm sure after we sleep on it, we'll come up with some more questions.
Okay. I got stuff everywhere.
Sorry.
Okay. Do you have any more questions, financial or CAFRA-related or anything at this moment? Remember, I'm available to go over specific numbers with you after you review it. It's only going to be online tomorrow morning. If you approve it tonight, then if you have any more questions, just contact me. But again, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Suzanne Burgess, Douglas Brewer, Pam Dubois, and the entire Finance staff for their assistance in completing the audit and the CAFRA this year. The comprehensive annual financial report for 2016, the 15% fund balance policy budget amendment, and the related project ordinance are submitted to you for approval tonight.
Any questions for Suzanne? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the CAFRA and related budget amendments.
And project ordinance.
And project ordinance as presented. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item is G2 from DHS, and Ben Rose is going to talk with us about transportation grant funding recommendations. And Bob Bushy as well.
Yes, Bob will be here as well. And again, this comes back to the discussions we've had over the last two months regarding our grant funding within the Department of Transportation, looking at the rope grant in particular, and then the home care community block grant. Of course, the rope grant has three pots of funding in it, and we really focus with you on the elderly and handicap part as well. From those discussions, we did submit a proposal to you that is basically in the form of a resolution that you have that puts a various protocols that we would implement regarding our grant funding program, primarily the biggest one being that we would spend only within the grant. So we would basically have to allocate those funds every month based on the number of trips that we could do with the calls and that we would not look at contracting these trips out at all. They would have to be provided within our capacity. We have had one situation come up where we have had a situation with a client that has a situation that we may need to contract on occasion, but we were doing it very temporarily. Those may come up on occasion, but for the most part, we're looking at trying to provide these trips within our capacity. So basically, there's about eight-step resolution in front of you that we are asking for your approval. Of course, again, as we've talked about, it's at your discretion, and if you would like to change this up or give us further direction, we would be happy to receive that as well, too.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Rose or Mr. Bushy? I will mention that I serve as a member of the Transportation Advisory Board. Bob explained this situation and this resolution in great detail to that board a week or so ago. And of course, that, a lot of folks that serve on that board are people that are involved with these various agencies and departments that are affected. And I think they were very supportive of the proposal and found it to be very reasonable. So I felt encouraged by that.
Okay.
Yeah. So at this time, I would entertain a motion that we adopt the attached resolution as presented and explained by Mr. Rose.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second? I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have an item from Planning and Development, Soil and Water Conservation. I think we've got Kelly Sifford and Jeff Goforth.
Excuse me, Chairman Morris.
Skip. Oh, I skipped one. Excuse me. Okay. Next item is Change Orders to Royal Oaks School. Jonathan Marshall.
This is actually, I was looking for Tim Louder. I'm on a roll tonight without having the backup people here. But you have a memorandum included in your agenda from Tim Louder with Cabarrus County Schools. In the Royal Oaks Elementary School budget, there are both allowances, which are by the different areas of construction that the schools control and are able to use for areas where there may be some variance from the original budget. But there's also a contingency that you approved for this, but that contingency approval lies with the Board of Commissioners. So in this case, they did run into some unexpected rock. It was something they could not test for. It was underneath the existing school, the portion that they tore down. So and the removal of that rock had a cost, of course, associated with it. They have passed the point in the construction where they would need some of those allowances. So they have, are proposing to take some of those allowances to pay for portions of this. But they do require an amount of $87,360 from the contingency to pay the remainder of those bills, and that approval lies with the board. In this particular motion, you would also need to authorize, if you choose to do that, authorize the Finance Director to prepare the related budget amendment and project ordinance updates.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Marshall?
If you take the $87,360 out, what would remain in their contingency? Do you know that off the bat? I'm sorry. I should have.
And actually, what I was going to propose is that we can send you both out to the Board of Commissioners, the remaining contingency in this entire budget, as well as those remaining allowances. Because I think that was the other question that Mr. Downs had is what other allowances are available and have they reached that point in construction? So I know Tim had been putting those together for us.
And Mr. Dubois is getting the answer to that question?
Yeah, it's okay. You can continue if you need to.
Okay. What would be the board's pleasure in this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval on this. That's what the contingency fund is set aside for in cases like this. And with the rock, you've got to deal with it. In other words, otherwise, the project stops and, you know, we're in a position where we can't allow that because it's on the timetable. So I'd recommend that we approve this motion.
Okay. Which includes the project ordinance and budget?
I can read it if you'd like for me, too.
That's good.
And make sure we got the motion down right for the recording. I'd like to approve, make a motion that we approve the change order request for Royal Oaks Elementary School in the amount of $87,360 with authorization for the Finance Director to prepare the related budget amendment and the project ordinance updates.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll let you vote before I say.
Go right ahead.
The total contingency for Royal Oaks Elementary is $233,120. So this would come from that amount.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay. And sorry for that false start. Mr., go forth. Now, we're up with Soil and Water Conservation.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Goforth. I'm vice chairman of the Soil and Water Conservation District. I've met some of you, been, had the pleasure of meeting all of you. I'm here on the behalf of the Conservation District to ask the county to cover a gap in funding to close one of our conservation easements. I believe you have information in your packet that explains this. But basically, the original estimated value of the easement would have came totally out of state and federal funding and staff time with the landowner contribution. And, well, fortunately, but unfortunately, the final appraisal came in 19% higher than the original estimated value. The federal government has decided to increase their funding by approximately $73,000 to match that. However, the fund that the state, the Agricultural Development Fuston, is out of money and cannot cover the difference. NRCS rules prohibit the landowner from waiving or just taking less money. There has to be a 25% match from what NRCS calls the entity. The entity can be the state, which was originally intentioned, or the state and county combined. So if, any questions that I can't answer, I'll be happy to answer, and I can try to get information tonight if you have any questions.
Questions, Commissioners? It's my understanding that if approved, these funds would come from budgeted funds for this purpose that we have already allocated.
Thank you for reminding me. Yes, the fund, we're asking for these funds to be appropriated from the tax deferment fund, which is where, when things come out of present use valuation, this fund is then dedicated in the purpose for funds to be expended from this fund for land protection. So this would follow the purpose of this fund.
Right.
Just to, these, each year, the Soil and Water Department is allocated $125,000 for these type projects. If they don't spend it within that fiscal year, we request to have it reappropriated so that some of these projects are very large, and $125,000 in one year won't cover it. So there is money in that fund. It is in their budget. It's not something that you're pulling from another budget and moving in. So it is in their budgets.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay. What would be your pleasure on this matter?
I would make a motion to approve the revised contract.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is G5, Infrastructure and Asset Management. We have Kevin Grant and Kyle Billifer with us. Welcome.
Good evening. Recently, Sunoco approached us concerning amending the current recycling material agreement we have with them. And just backtrack a little bit. Sunoco Recycling is the facility that we take all the recycling from the residential curbside recycling. The Republic picks up in the unincorporated area. And also, the recycling that is received at our recycling convenience centers, as well as county buildings, and our portion of the county schools that we work with, City of Recently, the recycling industries has been hurting, large part in due to depressed oil prices and also just the economy in general. So they've been really struggling. In fact, they've already approached Concord and Kannapolis about amending their agreement, which they did back in July. The current structure right now, and I guess we'll backtrack a little bit further, when all the recyclables go to Sunoco, there is what they call a material recycling facility. Because right now, you put all your recyclables in a cart or a bin. It goes to this facility and mechanically, and sometimes with people, it gets sorted. So the paper gets sorted from the cardboard, it gets sorted from the glass, it gets sorted from plastic bottles. And then from there, it gets baled and then gets marketed to folks that use it to recycle for new products. The current agreement that we have with Sunoco that we signed on January 1, 2013, called for us to receive revenue whenever the average material recycling price was above $75, in which for the first couple of years, we actually did very well. We received over $75,000 in revenue for the recycling. Over the last 16 months, the way, with the depressed recycling prices, we received nothing at this point. However, now they've come to us and want a proposed agreement in which we want, in which they want us to share the cost of recycling this material. So their proposed agreement or proposed amendment is that whenever the average commodity pricing goes below $70, that we have to contribute that difference per ton with a maximum cap of $20. An example is, say if the material recycling average price is $65 a ton, we would have to contribute $5 per ton for whatever we contributed to Sunoco. Typically, the residential curbside recycling, we average about 250 tons, and then we add roughly 75 tons to 100 tons from the schools and county buildings, and then from our recycling convenience centers. If you look at, based on this proposed amendment, look at the last two years, we would probably average paying about $16,000 per year. The good news right now is the recycling market is trending upward. The last four months, we've seen prices above $70, which means that we would actually receive revenue. And that's once again, and part of their revised structure is that when the price is above $70, we would get 55% of that difference per ton. So the last four months, we'd actually be receiving some money, nowhere near what we've seen in the past. But it is possible that if the recycling market gets back up to the $90 to $100 per ton range, that we'll start to see revenue again. However, the risk is that we would have to start paying for some of this recycling. Like I said, City of Concord and Kannapolis has done that, and Sunoco has this agreement in place with most municipalities and counties throughout the state of North Carolina that they serve. They're trying, and the other thing is, we don't have a whole lot of different options in which to take our recyclables to at this time. There's just not a lot of facilities out there, or the facilities that are out there are in great distance that would add actually cost to us. So at this point, what we're looking for- So at this point, what we're looking for is a motion to approve this amendment to the contract. It's not something that I'm greatly in favor of, but I'm not sure if we have many other options at this point. The current agreement runs out December 31st, 2017. So over the next, course of the next year, we are going to be working to see what other options there are out there. The word I'm getting that different municipalities and counties now are actually looking for a no-revenue, no-pay option, which just means the counties, based on whatever the market is, wouldn't receive any revenue, but at the same time, they wouldn't pay anything. So at least you've got that assured, that, you know, you're not going to get hit from the budget. So that's what we're gonna work on now. But in the meantime, we're gonna try to work with this. Like I said, hopefully, the way the market trends are, that we won't see any increase or have to pay anything out, but at this point, it's still unknown.
So if we did not approve this?
That's the question I've actually proposed to Sunoco, and they have not given me an answer. A subtle answer was, we're not sure what your other options could be. And the fact that most of the other counties and municipalities that they've signed with, or that their customers with have signed this agreement. And they're claiming that they need this to help them keep afloat in terms of operating. And I guess I should backtrack a little bit as well. One, another issue is that they're really struggling with the amount of contamination that's in recycling. And that's not only a North Carolina or Cabarrus County problem, that's a national problem. Meaning that folks are putting plastic bags in the recycling carts, they're putting garden hoses in recycling carts, and they're putting household trash. So now, when it goes to the recycling facilities, these things will jam up the machines. It slows down, they gotta shut the machines down to do maintenance. It's cost, it's already a low profit margin industry the way it is. It just adds to that cost. So we're also working with them, we're also working with Concord, Kannapolis, the other municipalities in Cabarrus, to try to work on some sort of campaign to get the awareness out to folks that, you know, we gotta learn that items, it's not only what's recyclable, but what's acceptable from these folks. And we're also reaching out to Sunoco, saying that if we're gonna sign this agreement, we need your help to help market this and campaign and provide awareness of what you guys want in these recycling carts. And then hopefully, that the residents will help comply with this and help keep, at least keep the cost under control.
Yeah, and yeah, obviously, if they can't operate their business and make a profit, they're not gonna continue doing it. And then we wouldn't have anywhere.
Well, it would, we would probably have to reach the further options, or options that are further away from us. The Sunoco facilities in Charlotte, the next closest material recycling facilities in Conover. And that would add, you know, increase cost for travel. And at this point, we haven't even discussed that Republic Services, who services the unincorporated areas in terms of, would you want to take your stuff to Conover? Right now, they agree to taking it to Charlotte. We haven't addressed that portion with them.
Right. So the contract that we currently have, that expires the end of 2017?
Correct.
Does not provide for this, but they're asking for us to amend that contract?
That is correct, yes.
I will say that, I don't know how active their program has been, but I was present at a meeting where they did a community presentation and explained some of those things about the effects of putting plastic bags in the recycling. And it was things that I never knew before. So it was very beneficial, and I hope they can ramp up the process of doing that sort of education.
And that's what we're also trying to do. Like I said, we've had some meetings between the county and the municipalities in terms of, how do we provide greater educational awareness to residents here in Cabarrus County? In terms of, like I said, why is there a reason why certain items are allowed in a cart? You could look at the fact of saying, all items are truly recyclable, but it's what's acceptable? What do they truly want in their, in those carts so they can actually sort it and actually sell it and they can survive?
And I think there are probably a lot of families in Cabarrus County that probably have discussions about whether or not the pizza box can go in the recycling.
And each of them makes a different decision when it goes in there.
That's right.
Labor cost is what kills these sorting facilities or these MRFs. So the more cross-contamination, it slows them down.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have questions? Okay, what would be your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see we have much choice, really, you know. But we're talking about amending the current contract, is that right? So it would be effective, what, January 1st, or immediately through the duration of the contract?
We've asked them to make it effective January 1 through the end of the calendar year.
And in the meantime, are we gonna seek out other alternatives, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, because there may be something out there that we don't know about.
Yes, we're actually working with cooperation with Concord and Kannapolis to see if we could even team up, make ourselves more attractive to some other facility.
Right, well, I'd appreciate that, because, you know, we, as elected officials too, do try to collaborate with the other entities, you know, that are elected so that we can save resources, save money, that type thing. So I think it would be good. But with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the amendment to the recycle materials agreement.
Okay, do I hear a second to that motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next item is a resolution in support of House Bill 12 and 13. And I think the county manager has some information for us on that. Yeah, I've got 231.
We have received, our office received a request from Dr. Louder with Cabarrus County Schools and Dr. Buckwell with Kannapolis City Schools to potentially have the board support. There's two bills that are out right now in the legislature that have, that are causing potential financial and operational issues for the school system. And as the ones who fund part of the school system, it would create financial problems for us as well. So we put together, there's two bills there, we put together, Ms. Smith put together a resolution for you to review and approve. I can read that resolution word for word. And a resolution supporting House Bills 12 and 13. Whereas Representatives Johnson, Horn, Elmore, and Blackwell have filed and sponsored House Bill 12, titled "An Act to Provide Additional Flexibility to Local School Boards of Education and Adoption School Opening Dates." And House Bill 13, titled "An Act to Modify the Maximum Average Class Size Requirements" and Individual Class Size Requirements for Kindergarten through Third Grade. Whereas HB 12 states that local boards of education may schedule their opening date to coincide with the opening date of Community College serving the school district. Whereas Cabarrus County Schools and Kannapolis City Schools have both expressed in writing a desire to align their schedules with that of Rowan Cabarrus Community College in order to make it less complicated for high school students to take classes at the community college and earn college credits while in high school. Whereas HB 13 seeks to provide more flexibility regarding class size restrictions. And whereas Cabarrus County Schools and Kannapolis City Schools have both expressed in writing the financial impact should HB 13 fail. Whereas HB 13, whereas should HB 13 fail to pass, the financial impacts on both school districts would necessitate the addition of mobile units, infrastructure, and teachers at a considerable local cost. Whereas Kannapolis City Schools estimates the financial impact on their district to include the addition of eight to 10 mobile units at $99,000 per unit, as well as the addition of 10 to 12 teachers, at an approximate local cost of $60,000 for teacher supplements. Whereas Cabarrus County Schools estimates the financial impact on their district to include the addition of 88 mobile units at $99,000 per unit, as well as the addition of 104 teachers, at an approximate local cost of $312,000 for teacher supplements. Whereas the long-term educational goals of Cabarrus County students can be reinforced by supporting HB 12, and detrimental financial impacts to the school districts and the county can be avoided by supporting HB 13. Whereas HB 12 reinforces support of the attainment of higher education among Cabarrus County students, and the passing of HB 13 is integral to providing flexibility for school districts while avoiding severe financial impacts based on class size restrictions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, number one, supports the passing of HB 12 and the option for school districts to align their schedules with Community College. And the support, and number two, supports the passing of HB 13 and the option for flexibility in class size requirements. Number three, petitions the support of their local delegation to the North Carolina General Assembly regarding HB 12 and HB 13, recognizing the future and financial impacts of Cabarrus County, its school districts, citizens, and students.
Okay, thank you. My rough math is correct. I think the financial impact to us, if this does not pass, is about $10 million. Or a little better than $10 million, totally, between the two systems.
In addition to that, those other, those other costs for HB 13, or the class sizes, were set so that it may even have an impact on the arts classes and the arts and music and band classes as well. It may eliminate them if implemented as originally addressed. And that's the concerns of our superintendents.
Right.
In addition to the cost of the programs.
And I think that, I don't know that those numbers are 100% correct, because I think that they're gonna come and ask for the full salaries for those teachers. I don't think it's just the supplement. I think it would be the salaries, because they're not gonna get state funding for additional teaching positions. And they would then be trying to change, if I understood it correctly, change those positions such as technology facilitators and arts teachers and music teachers at the elementary level, would have to become, quote unquote, regular classroom teachers in order to reduce the class size. So those positions would then either be eliminated, or they would ask us to fund those positions. So I think it's, it is a huge impact for us to add that many additional locally paid teachers, full salary locally paid teachers, not just supplements.
Okay, these are the numbers we received from them, but I am meeting with Dr. Louder in the morning.
And I'm not disagreeing, those are the numbers you received, but I do think that if-
But you're exactly right.
They're not getting additional teaching positions. They're gonna come to us and say, we need another 100 and some teaching positions.
That's correct, that is correct.
And they do tend to ask us to pay for the lower-cost teaching positions and not the higher-cost teaching positions. But nonetheless, that's what the impact is. It's a major impact. And I cannot imagine an elementary school that does not have a PE teacher, and does not have a music teacher, or an art teacher, or a technology facilitator on those campuses. I think that would be, that's, I don't believe that they, the legislature realized what they were doing with their good intentions, but this is most definitely the result of it.
Right.
And we need to support both our school systems and this one.
I'd like to add a comment to Liz's, because Liz will remember this well, or maybe on the school board. I can remember when we first started building schools, Weddington Hills, and the school board at that time agreed that music and art were important enough to have individual classrooms, the teachers were pushing carts around from room to room. And we've stuck with that ever since, and we've kept that honor, that proposal in all the schools we've built. And I think it would be a disaster for us to have to change that.
So we would ask if the board so chooses to approve the resolution that it would be contingent upon us updating the numbers as needed, as would be appropriate, based on Commissioner Poole's comments and then my conversation with the superintendents.
So at this time, I would entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution with the provision that the figures be updated by the county manager after discussion with the appropriate superintendents.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is appointments to-
Chairman, if you don't mind, Jason has asked if he could just make a comment or two for us?
Absolutely.
And so I thought I, this might be an appropriate time.
Certainly, be sure to press your green microphone button.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, shall these two bills, especially HB 13, are there any proposed cuts within those schools that would have to be carried out in order to fund our schools?
I think that probably the passage of these two bills that have been proposed would eliminate the need to make cuts in those areas. Certainly, from the county's perspective, it would eliminate the additional expense that we would incur, which obviously has to come from other programs. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Does that, anybody have anything they'd like to add to that? Great, okay, thank you. Okay, appointments to boards and committees. And first one is removal from the Cabarrus County Planning and Zoning Commission. Dane Laney, Kannapolis Area Representative, has resigned from his position on the Cabarrus County Planning and Zoning Commission on November 15th, 2016. And it is requested to remove his name from the roster. Therefore, at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Dane Laney from the Cabarrus County Planning and Zoning Commission roster and thank him for his service. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. I will say that that does leave a vacancy for a Kannapolis Area Representative on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we would encourage folks that are listening to, if they are interested in serving, to please send in an application. We have those posted on our website. Next item is in regards to the Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee. The term of appointment for Linda Miller, ex officio Representative, Central Lina Area on Council on Aging expires on December 31st, 2016. An application was received to serve on the HCCBG Committee from Katie Kutcher, Aging Specialist, Central Lina Area Agency on Aging. Ms. Kutcher resides in Mecklenburg County, and an exemption to the residency provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. The terms of appointment for HCCBG Committee at Large Members, James Polk, Anita Helms, Scott Behringer, and Janice Yao expire on December 31st, 2016. Mr. Polk, Ms. Helms, and Mr. Behringer are willing to serve another term. Mr. Polk also serves on the Transportation Advisory Board. And an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy will be needed for him. Designated agency member Kathy Maurer will be retiring from her position with the county at the end of the year, which we just heard about, and has submitted her resignation to the HCCBG Committee. Ms. Maurer has served on this committee since June of 2013. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to remove Linda Miller, Janice Yao, and Kathy Maurer from the HCCBG Committee roster and thank them for their service. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, I would entertain a motion to appoint Katie Kutcher to the HCCBG Committee as the Central Lina Area Agency- Central Atlanta Area Agency on Aging, ex officio representative, for a three-year term ending December 31, 2019, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. I would then entertain a motion to reappoint James Polk, Anita Helms, and Scott Baringer to the HCCBG committee as at-large representatives for three-year terms, ending December 31, 2019, including an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy for Mr. Polk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And as quick as I can get to the next correct page, okay, MPO appointments. The Cabarrus County Appointments to the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Staff Level, Technical Coordinating Committee, and Elected Official Level Transportation Advisory Committee expire at the end of December. The current TCC representative is Jonathan Marshall, and the alternate is Susie Morris. Staff is recommending that Susie Morris be appointed as the regular member, and Kelly Sifford as the alternate. The current TAC representative is Elizabeth Poole, and Steve Morris is the alternate. At this time, I would entertain a motion to appoint Susie Morris as the regular member, and Kelly Sifford as the alternate to the Technical Coordinating Committee of the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and I would entertain a motion that Elizabeth Poole be named the TAC representative with Steve Morris as the alternate.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. You will see that there are a number of reports attached to your agenda for informational purposes. Please, I encourage you to read those. There's quite, quite, quite a bit of good information available there. And at this time, I would open the floor to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. Okay, hearing, hearing none, I would open the floor for general comments by board members.
Mr. Chairman, it's appropriate that I be the last one on the agenda tonight, because in a few weeks, we're going to be celebrating New Year, and with its promise and its well-intentioned resolutions. So I'm announcing tonight that I'm giving myself a big Christmas present, and making my first resolution of 1917, that unlike all the others I've ever made, I plan to keep. Tonight, I'm stepping down from the county commission for a very selfish reason. When you're younger than I, much younger, you have the luxury of saying, "Someday I'll run that marathon. Someday I'll learn to ice skate. Someday I'll travel around the world." And you can say that, because someday is so elusive and so very far away. But when you reach a certain age, mine being 81 this past Thursday, the time for these some days passes. To quell the rumors that I expect will come, I am in excellent health, and I want to appreciate that gift of time. I won't do anything spectacular, but I will continue to study piano and learn to paint, and I'll be able to go through all the years of stuff to glean the wheat from the chaff that clutters both my mind and my house. I will board planes to visit my older brother and sisters, and take short travels with my dear friends. I have been interested in government since high school, when I debated the merits of Adlai Stevenson in his race against Dwight Eisenhower. My first foray into an elected position was in 1994, when after a disastrous school bond failure, I ran for the Board of Education. For 22 years, you have honored me with the chance to be a part of both that board and this one. I tried to retire twice before, but this time is for certain, so don't ask. But I really don't like politics, if politics is constant bickering and backstabbing, or insisting that your way is the only way. That is why it is especially hard to leave this particular board. These fellow members don't do any of those things, but they do work very hard to learn each issue's details and collaborate with the fine staff that Cabarrus County is blessed to have. I can't leave without thanking the people of this county, who several years ago gave overwhelming support in my family's fight with Washington and General Motors to keep our franchise from being arbitrarily closed. It will sound corny to some, but I call the move to Concord Ben and I made in 1976 a God thing. It was meant to be, but it came with certain responsibilities and obligations, and I have tried to honor them. So I leave with a lump in my throat, knowing that I will miss being in the know, and I will especially miss all of the folks here tonight, and so many others that I have come to know and work with over the years. I will continue my efforts with the Cabarrus County Education Foundation and Central Methodist Church, but please don't call me for at least a year, I'm tired. Thank you.
As, as disappointing as this announcement is, it was not unexpected. Commissioner Minna has discussed this with me earlier, very selfishly. I would like to try to talk her out of it, but as she said, "Don't ask." And trust me, we've already been through that. 22 years of unselfish service to Cabarrus County is, is something to be celebrated and appreciated, and I certainly applaud you for that. I would, I would like to personally thank you, Grace, for, for being, not only for your public service to Cabarrus County, but being a mentor to me, and an example of, of what public service means. And, and I think there are probably many people in Cabarrus County that would feel the same way. Your absence will leave a, a big hole on this board, and I hope that we can fill that hole quickly. January brings a new year and a very busy month for this board, with planning and training activities that are already on, on board, and, and so I, I hope we can, can deal with this expeditiously. This will be the, the first time that a vacancy has occurred on this board that would be filled under North Carolina General Statute 153A-27. And that statute states, "If a vacancy occurs on the Board of Commissioners, the remaining members of the board shall appoint a qualified person to fill the vacancy. If for any reason the remaining members of the board do not fill a vacancy within 60 days of the, after the day the vacancy occurs, the clerk shall immediately report the vacancy to the Clerk of Superior Court of the County. The Clerk of Superior Court shall, within 10 days after the day the vacancy is reported to him, fill the vacancy. To be eligible for appointment to fill a vacancy, a person must be a member of the same political party as the member being replaced, if that member was elected as the nominee of a political party," which is the case here. Grace was the Republican nominee. "The Board of Commissioners or the Clerk of Superior Court, as the case may be, shall consult the county executive committee of the appropriate political party before filling a vacancy. But neither the board nor the Clerk of the Superior Court is bound by the committee's recommendation." In my own mind, I have a list of persons that have expressed interest in serving over the past four years. I'm sure that others of you may also think of individuals, and I expect that upon hearing of this vacancy, additional people will come forward. If anyone would like their name to be considered, they should call our clerk, Megan Schmidt, at 704-920-2109, or they can email her at mismitt, that's M-I-S-M-I-T, at cabarruscounty.us. I will point out that county offices will be closed Friday, December 23 through Tuesday, December 27. After polling the available board members as to appropriate times, I would like to call for a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners to be held on Wednesday, December 28, at 1:00 PM, in the multipurpose room of the Cabarrus County Governmental Center. It will be up to a vote of the board at that meeting as to whether we fill the position at that meeting, or approve the process for filling the vacancy. Once again, I would like to thank Grace for your contributions. I wish you well on those someday resolutions, and I would be delighted to open the floor for comments from other board members.
Well, Ms. Grace, I have to say, it's been a pleasure to serve with you over the last two years, and your knowledge and your commitment and your experience is truly going to be missed here on this board. You leave truly big shoes to fill for someone, so I wish you the best. We truly will miss you, but we will see you out and about, and watching you fulfill those resolutions, I'm sure. So, good luck.
You know, I, I have, I've just, but, you know, you've solved, you've given a great service to your community, and this sudden announcement will surely be missed, and something with your community, and I would like to wish you a very happy retirement.
We do have need of a closed session, hopefully a very brief one. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for a closed session for 153-318.11A3 to discuss matters of county litigation. Okay, I have a motion, do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we will close session. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And Merry Christmas to everyone in our TV audience, and we are now in closed session.